Twice consistent. The third time.
That's. It's actually. Small.
Okay. We want to sit here.
They would like to welcome everyone today and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Is four thirty and we are in the moral type purpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council in person today. Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Pritasun, Councilman Bitsey Amanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Herman, Councilman. Myself, we're joined at the table by our city manager, Mr. Pyle and our city recorder, Ms. Kimmich. I will now turn them, our next item is the minutes, I'll turn the time to the council for discussion or emotion on our April eighteenth minutes.
I move for approval of eight minutes second.
Thank you, we have motion a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Okay, our regular meeting tonight has been canceled. So we'll move on to our awards ceremonies and proclamations. And our first one is the outstanding professional board presentation. And then we have the Arbor Day proclamation and the Tree City Award. Presentation. So does anybody have any questions on those that we need Nancy to come up and explain? Okay, so two of them, they're going to present to us, right?
Yep, and then the proclamation, if anyone wants to read that.
Okay, so can we put the two presentations together, the proclamation at the end?
Absolutely.
Okay, would anybody like to read the Arbor Day proclamation? Well, this thing, okay. Lars will do that. I don't know if you saw his hand from that angle or not. Okay. Um. We'll now have our review of the. C D B G doesn't have any explanation, oh, there we go, it will be resolution twenty three dash fifty two. And we'll turn the time over to Peggy Daniels. That.
Mayor Lang and our council, step back a little bit, I'm here to present the information about our C W G grant. And it is administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD. And the primary objective of that is to help viable communities through decent housing, sustainable environment and economic opportunities. And it serves people who are eighty percent or lower of median area income, so our low to moderate individuals that live within the city. Um, sixty, fifty-six percent of our residents that live here fall within that category. So we get an allocation of about one million dollars every year to be able to help these individuals. And we put together a five-year consolidated plan and then every year we have to update that in the annual plan. So the documents that you received are our annual plan that we are submitting for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And through that process, there are many rules or regulations we have to follow, one of those is that we submit, we put out a RFA for applications to be submitted through a competitive process. And through that, we put together a citizen review board that looks at all the applications and, and through that, they select the applicants that they would like to fund and the funding amounts. And so the other documents you have is also the recommended funding amounts and the agencies to fund. For the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Hey, thank you, any questions from the council? Sure.
I'll just mention, I, you know, last year I spent my first swipe at this and I mentioned I would like to be more involved and so my fault for not jumping on earlier in the year, but to the extent that would be appropriate, I'd like to have a little more engagement in this process. Shouldn't, but I did have a question on the plan, on page three. It caught my eye because it's underlined. It says all of the funding awarded under this program was used for activities that benefit LMI persons. So how do we validate that or do we ask for like income information?
Yeah, that's a very good question, each of the agencies that we give money to have reports that they put in, they're collecting either financial in information from the individuals that they serve, or we are able to look at an area benefit which takes in census blocks and we are able to look at the population that lives in there and if the population is fifty-one percent or lower or higher of LMI individuals, then we presume as HUD does that we are serving all those people in that area.
Okay, so there is like a reporting that takes place.
Yes. Yep.
Um. Also on the plan, on page five, there were some dates that, I don't know, that those should be updated. So like there was a date, the second public meeting was held on April eighteenth during the city council study session meeting. Um. Did we have that last week?
Um, I'll update those, we were not able to, your schedule was pretty heavy those days and so we brought it to today and then next we will put it down on the regular session, so I'll update that before we submit it to HUD.
Okay, so will that, will that delay the proceeding dates up beyond or after that?
We have to submit this by May tenth to HUD, so we'll, we'll be okay if it's approved next week.
Got you. Alright, thanks.
Anything else?
Anything else? Hey, thank you so much. Okay, we'll now turn to our resolutions, resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three. Our tentative budget, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle and pass on to Mr. Welch.
Hey, thank you ma'am. So my portion of this discussion will just be kind of a review of the process of where we've been, we've had various discussions going on since the beginning of the year and the latest iteration of information submitted to the council was about a month ago, included narrative, included a narrative description and also a program mod recommendation from an operational standpoint and also a C I P recommendation, which I noted in the memo could be done as part of this budget process or could even be adopted prior to the August ninth final adoption because that money is all sitting in the C I P fund right now anyway. So I did want to talk about that for just a moment. But that's kind of a side issue to the purpose of this item in this meeting, so as you all know, each year we have to have a tentative, a budget approved and then we go through the various other steps, including getting our property tax rate from the county and then having final adoption in August. So we're planning on proceeding through that same process again, with the exception, which I'll also note again, that the R D A, the Building Authority and the Housing Authority, we also do as separate entities and they start in this same timeframe and we actually do do the final adoption earlier than the August date because of course we don't have to have a property tax hearing or certified rate come down from the county, so those happen earlier than that. In the past, what we used to do was, we would use this moment as kind of a ceremonial passing of the paper budget, we haven't done that for the last couple of years, we've submitted that to you electronically. And so usually what we would do is have Jim come up and kind of hand that around and ask if there are any questions on the process, we don't have a paper version of that, we stopped doing that, like I said, it was either one or two years ago. We can do that for anybody who would like a paper version as well. And at that point, I'd also invite Jim to make any commentary he has for the budget itself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle, I think you've covered most of the bases on this one. By law and state statute, we are required to adopt that tentative budget in the first regularly scheduled meeting in May, so that will be coming up next week. And that budget allows the city to operate until the final budget is adopted. Because we have elected to review the certified tax rate and the potential judgment levy that we get each year. We hold a public hearing in August and then adopt that budget, that date's actually been changed a little bit in order to coordinate with some of the other taxing entities within the county. Also by state law, we can't, when we hold our public hearing for a final adoption, we can't conflict with, for example, the special districts or the school districts, and so we have to coordinate those dates with the, with the county recorder's office. Our date will be, I think it's August the twenty-second. That's a Tuesday, I may have the date wrong, but it's that week, it's the twenty-second, thank you. So that's when we'll be doing the final hearing for the adoption of the budget. Amendments and adjustments are, can be made between now and then. We need those pretty well wrapped up and the final budget by July so that we can make the public notice deadlines so that we can adopt the budget in August. So with that, you should have copies of it and if you do want to have a paper copy, I'm happy to provide one for you.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Welch?
I just, I would like a copy that I can at least mark up.
Sure.
Did you want to, ma'am?
Yep, you're right.
Okay, did you want to give sort of the preliminary, also we normally go through the judgment levy discussion, I can't remember if we usually do it now or if we wait till August or if we do it both, so I thought I'd just.
Be very appropriate either way, I usually do it in July, I mean in August, just so that people understand what it was. For those of you that have not done, excuse me, this before, so I guess a little bit of that refreshments from the court, it's stuck in my throat. Each year, entities, meaning businesses or large taxpaying organizations, have the ability to appeal the valuation and taxes that they're being paid, that happens on a pretty regular basis. And sometimes if they go in and they appeal through the Board of Appeals and they award a rebate of taxes to these entities because they said that they were improperly assessed or whatever the case might be, they, they will determine that they're, that they are do a rebate from everyone that collected money from those taxing entities, one of those is us. So every June, we will get a list of the entities that have protested their taxes and have been awarded a rebate. And instead of going back over the number of years that it accrued that rebate, so let's say somebody's been paying according to the Board of Adjustment for seven years, too much taxes, they'll come back to the city or the school district or whoever and they'll say, you need to pay us all that back in one year. So that creates quite a burden on cities and other taxing entities. So in order to offset that burden, they allow what's called a judgment levy adoption. Now that's what we consider, so it allows us to say, okay, for one year, because the other taxpayers have been paying less than they probably should have because someone else was paying more. You can go back and you can adjust the rate just that one year to recapture that amount that you're paying them as a rebate and then the rates go right back, well, the the amount that they pay goes right back down to the level rate, so that's called a judgment levy. It ranges in amounts that we've seen as little as twenty-five to forty thousand dollars, which really isn't, you know, a big bump on the radar for a budget our size. But we've seen those in the two to four million dollar range, we can have a significant impact on our operations. So we don't know what that is until we get it in June. And so we leave that door open and we schedule a public hearing to hold public comment and budget adoption in August. Also, it's kind of interesting, since we've started doing that, there are another, other, a number of other entities that are beginning to do this, recognizing the wisdom in it and it does give us flexibility in our budget, so it's a, it's a good process and always willing to help people if they need more information on that.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Welch?
Questions?
Comments, concerns?
Yes.
Okay.
Um. A year ago, I think the narrative was, we're going to raise taxes because our fire and police budgets. And so I'm looking at this and fire and police aren't the highest increase, percentage change, they're actually the lowest, well, legal, I guess Eric gets the lowest, but then the others are right next to it. And so. Yeah. I would just like more detail on all of these that are in the double digits percent change. And why, what's the justification for that? You know, ten million this year, ten million next year, we haven't even added the program mods, which I would want included in the budget, it was all up to me, but. Then you're looking at real numbers and and I wouldn't be able to go through, through this, so. That's where I'm at. Not that that's probably a surprise to anybody.
Is that hard to get?
Uh, as far as the, the double digit change, that would not be hard to get, we can do just a narrative presentation for that or memo or however we'd like to do that, that would be fine.
How would you like that?
Yeah, oh, I did have another, the, the operational program mods that were proposed are included in that number, you may have just been referring to the C I P, I wasn't sure, so I thought just from a, might give you some comfort standpoint, all the operational changes are, as proposed, are in the budget. The C I P ones, of course, I kept separate because it wouldn't be coming from the general fund, it would be coming from the C I P. If I can kind of add on to that conversation like I alluded to at the very beginning, I would like the council to kind of give us a little direction on that, like I said, we could approve that as part of the normal budget process from a timing standpoint, that way everybody would sort of know what's going on there. But we can also do it earlier and I would recommend we do it earlier because the money is there, it sits in the C I P fund balance and that would give us the construction season for some of the projects that are recommended there. And just let us get an early, earlier start, it really doesn't matter from a budgetary process standpoint unless it's a timing question for the council themselves. Also to that mayor, I was going to propose two other projects, depending on the council's druthers with that, or the, the capital projects recommendations, which would be the one project that you brought up last week on the fence. And the other one would be the, the painting puzzle project, which I really do see as a C I P one-time project, it's not really an operational cost because we wouldn't be doing that in recurring years. If we did that, right now, the C I P capital project recommendation list is about five point four million dollars out of what right currently is something under nine million, if I remember right, in the fund balance. And then you would be adding those two projects, would be something on the order of two hundred thousand, maybe two hundred and ten thousand to that goal.
And just one, one other thing, I would like it not to be just communication or a narrative keynote to us, I'd like it to be here in the public the justification of the increase.
Oh, you mean for the double digit stuff?
Yep.
Not this, not the C I P.
Yeah, sorry, just going back to.
Yeah, sure.
Public information.
Yeah, that's the council's preference, we can do that.
Okay, anybody object to that?
Makes sense.
Alright, good enough, any other questions, concerns?
So can I move forward with the capital brother recommendations, there's two ways I could do that, I could either do that by just general head nod, I don't need formal action unless you'd like to do that because we're going to do that anyway by either contract or budget opening or both, or if you just wanted to have us bring you a resolution and therefore we've kind of got this list that you all know, that's, that's the decisive on list, I'm happy to do that that way too. If I can have the direction to proceed with that.
Like having a, kind of like a second budget. Agree upon early.
Now, the, the one caveat I would have to that is let us not, you know, think that just because we are trying to make this capital project list the list, that that's it and it's set in stone and nothing else can be added to it throughout the year and another process, although I know that there, there different feelings about how budget openings our conductor should be, but it would be our intent that that would be the vast majority of it. And happy to do that from a resolution standpoint, bringing the list.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful to have it.
Okay.
In a resolution.
We'll do that.
Anybody object to that? Okay, sounds great, any other concerns on the budget? Hey, thank you. And thank you. So we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Flores for resolution twenty-three fifty-four and twenty-three fifty-five. Our insurance renewals.
Yes, hello, mayor and council, thank you. So yeah, these are just our annual renewals of our health insurance and dental insurance. Am I good to just talk on both at the same time?
Okay, I think so, is that fine? Okay.
Okay. So no major changes to them, which is great, that's what we wanted, and they came through at a cost and fee that we, we hoped for and planned for, so we're actually really happy with where we ended on both of these. And without many changes, I don't really have a lot to discuss, if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, I would like you to go through a description of the process we have leading up to this, just so the council gets a feel for, which I agree with, we had very successful negotiations, but what that entailed and, and kind of how we got to where we are.
Perfect. So based, based on our current year health insurance claims data, we anticipated and select health came to us with a renewal that was fairly high. And so through, through the negotiations and bringing in reviewing claims data, market trends and what we anticipate for the coming year, we were able to negotiate those, those costs down a lot. We also discussed things such as like carving out pharmacy and having pharmacy handled separate from select health. Because we would be able to get that cheaper than through select health. However, select health wants our business and, and through those meetings, they agreed to some lower fees and greater rebates that helped us bring that total cost down to what we felt was appropriate. We also received quotes, reached out to other providers to identify what they would bring to us and what it would look like if we moved to a different provider. We didn't want to do that, that's, that's a big process and a lot on the employees to have to switch providers, so that wasn't ideal, but we wanted to do it just to ensure we're getting the right cost. So through multiple meetings and communications, we were able to finally get them down to a point that we were really happy with. Anything further on that wing?
No, that's good, I just wanted you guys to be able to brag on yourselves a little bit in that, I mean, this, this pharmacy piece that John's talking about, we were very seriously considering bringing that to you and would have if select health hadn't stepped up to the plate, but with our folks and our broker, they, they did. And we were very happy about that.
Yes. Yep.
Saved us some disruption, we would have been willing to go through it and bring that recommendation to you.
The cost savings it would have given us, it was worth looking at the change, but then select health said, no, we want to keep you here and, and so they, they gave in, no.
Oh, and I can't remember, did you mention how many companies bid? The businesses, the three?
We looked at four different ones, we brought one in to actually present to us. And that also put some pressure on select health to do what they needed to keep us.
Okay. Anybody else have come? Thank you, really appreciate your effort on the behalf of the employees, that's wonderful, thank you. Alright, we'll now go to resolution twenty-three fifty-six and turn over to Mr. Springwire.
Thank you, mayor, afternoon, council. For you today is an agreement with Momentum Recycling for curbside glass recycling for the residents of West Valley City. In an attempt to increase some of the sustainability opportunities for our residents, I reached out to Momentum. Full disclosure, I am one of their customers and have been for about five years, so when I why are they not here and they said, well, we would love to be there, so they were really excited about it. The agreement would allow Momentum to be the exclusive provider of curbside recycling pickup for a period of five years. There are two, three-year extensions on that, on that contract. There are no other companies currently in the Wasatch Front that offer this, so the exclusivity didn't seem to be, wasn't a concern for me. The program will not cost the city anything. In fact, it might actually, depending on how successful it is, it might actually save us some money. If we remove the glass from the garbage, our tipping fees that we pay could actually go down in the long run, it's it, it could be pennies, but we know it won't cost us anything. Program is one hundred percent elective for our residents, cost is eight dollars per month for roughly one-third of what we're paying for Netflix.
But in a productive perspective.
Yeah, right, yeah. The momentum is only going to need about a hundred and fifty subscribers to, to roll it out in the city and they already have over sixty in their system now by residents who have reached out to them independently saying, can we please get this? Billing is going to be handled directly through Momentum and the customer, they'll do a little credit card, so we're out of that. The only responsibility for the city would be to we're going to help promote it, we'll put it on our website, we'll put it on our social media platforms and any calls that come in to administration, public works, wherever, will be obligated to direct those, those calls to Momentum. Recycled glass, which is, glass is the easiest of the, of our household materials to recycle. Glass is the easiest of the, of our household materials to recycle, much easier than plastic, easier than aluminum. One of the things I really like about Momentum. Their. Their, their local company, their, their facilities in Salt Lake City, they pick up the glass, they take it to their plant, Salt Lake City, they process it. And that, that raw material is then stays within Utah. Some of it is used to make, uh, goes back to make more bottles. But the majority of it's going down to, I believe it's Payson, um, to Owens Corning where they're turning it into fiberglass, which then helps our insulation. And our heating efficiency and help sustainability and we just get in this really cool cycle. Um, so we're not. Point being, we're not taking this material, shipping it across the country and thereby negating any, any. Any environmental benefits that we would have had by, by recycling it. Take all sizes, colors, glass, household items, food items, glassware, bottles, even plate glasses, as long as it's not tempered. All can be used. They provide their own can. Once a month, you'll get to, to subscribers sign up on their phone, you'll get a text message. Tomorrow's your pickup day, you wheel the thing out to the curb. They come by, pick it up, you wheel it out. For me, just having the containers was worth the eight dollars alone, let alone. You know, putting it in the back of the car and. Hauling it down there. I know in my, in my neighborhood, there are. Sometimes it's, it's the smallest of the cans, like the thirty five gallon can, but it's the same wheeled. You know, can that our garbage and recycling cans are just tiny one, but with glass, you. I know neighbors that, that do it collectively. Like let's, well, let's just do it together. When we wheel it out, we'll just go dump or, you know, three, four families at eight bucks, you know, but still. So that's the program. I'm excited about it, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hey, any questions from the council?
My wife is one of those sixty inquiries.
Good.
It's gonna save me having to drive stuff over to the school and dump.
Right. I should also mention that we, through the presentation and review of this program, Dan Johnson and Public Works have, have reviewed it and. They're, they're comfortable, it works within where, what their, their system and obviously the administration has approved this as well, so.
So with this service, will we keep the glass bins?
Yes.
Out of the.
Will not be affected by this, they'll still be there, um. For those that want, those who's that want to continue to do that, we, that won't change. We're going to increase our opportunities for glass recycling rather than changing.
Good. How clean do I have to have this glass before I go put it in the bin? I don't take that label off or anything.
Honestly, that was one of the things that I found out during the process. I'm one that I'll go rinse out my, my pasta sauce. Bottle before throwing it in, the guy's like, don't waste your time, don't waste the water. This is our machine washes it. I said, what about like, you know, you get your little soy sauce bottle and you got the little plastic tab on the bottom. He's like. They don't care about any of that. Our machine blows all that off, blows the labels off, don't wash it, don't clean it, just drop it right in a bin. Label, you know, keeping the caps on it, even if the cap isn't glass, if the cap's plastic or the cap is, is aluminum. That gets separated, they, and they recycle that. You know, through the, through the other means, so I learned something new. I don't want, so now I don't wash anything out anymore before I throw it away.
Well, that would be an important one to put in our messaging that don't wash it and waste water.
Yep.
And then. How consistent is the schedule? When you said it pops up on your phone, is it the third Tuesday of every month or does it change something?
Nope, first, I, my pickup is the first Thursday of every month and it's been that way for three years. It doesn't change. And they'll, yeah, I mean, as we grow, hopefully, there may be some. Fluidity in that as, as they're increasing the neighborhoods, but it's, it's been pretty consistent for me.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Those are my three questions. Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great adventure, a great find. Alright, we'll now turn the time over to Chief Jacobs for resolution twenty three dash fifty seven, purchase of a Jeep. Is chief.
Oh, the other way. Yes, I wasn't here early enough to get prime seating, so. I tried to tell him it's a safety issue, but. I am actually very excited to be here in front of you tonight and, uh, sir, if you'll. Extend me a little latitude and providing some history. Um, in twenty fifteen. Our officer that. Administered the dare program retired. And we have not had a dare program since then, uh, previous administration didn't feel that it was. Um, a program that, that. They wanted to continue, so. Um. I felt that as part of our community outreach efforts and our community engagement efforts, it was an important program, so. Or at least some sort of youth engagement program, and we've got some other programs that are going on, but. Um, the education component of, uh, life skills of. The anti-drug message, the anti-alcohol message, um, I wanted to find a way to bring that back. So I went to a conference, there was this thing, I brought it back to my people, they said, look at this thing, see if it's what we want to do. And they said, well, what about there? And there'd been some mixed feelings about there in the past as far as its effectiveness. I can tell you our schools here, especially in. Our east side elementary schools, they were very, very upset when our dare program went away and the one-on-one interactions with the police officer that were positive went away and. Um, so they did a side-by-side comparison of these two programs. And it turns out that as dare has evolved, it's actually our ideal program. So over this last year, we've been able to get some staff trained in, um, teaching dare again. And so we've got our program up and running. As part of that. Uh, the dare program, there's usually a dare car, which helps with community events and interactions. It sparks conversations and it gets kids interested. So I'm here before you tonight to request authorization to purchase a vehicle for this dare car. We have found that, uh, we're able to fund pretty much our entire dare program, including this vehicle with beer tax money. Cause a component of beer tax money is, uh, for the education of, um, youth alcohol. Uh. Don't do it, you know what I'm talking about, um. So that the, the alcohol education component is part of, even though dare is drug, is this drug reasons of awareness and resistance education. It also entails, um, alcohol, nicotine, smoking, vaping, uh. Prescription misuse, over the counter misuse, anything that's, uh, is har- a harmful substance to our children. Uh, the dare program focuses on. So the beer tax money would fund, uh, this vehicle and the upfitting of it in addition to, uh, the rest of the program where we're getting the folks chain. Trained and out to the schools and getting this program going again, so we're actually very excited about it.
Cool. Okay, any questions or comments from the council?
Just say that I worked with Dare for many years as a principal and it, uh, it is effective. Not every kid will. Accept their training, but ninety-nine percent of them, well. When they're including in the gangs down in the third grade. Dare is a good alternative.
Okay, so. My one question is. Um, now that we're Ford certified, why are we going with a Jeep instead of a Ford?
Well, uh, this is kind of a. One-time, one-off purchase, so we've been trying to find a good deal that's also a good winter vehicle, schools in session during the wintertime. And. In a nutshell, basically we've been searching KSL to find the vehicle that fits the need and is in the price point that we're looking for and. This, uh, particular vehicle, this Jeep Gladiator. Um, was below MSRP, uh, looked like it was, um, a good fit and. That's, that was our. About fourth vehicle that we've tried to like get in on, uh, but vehicles are moving so quickly that we just. Uh, haven't been able to lock anything in and we were able to at least lock in, um, a down payment on this one to hold it until we could bring it to council.
Okay. So you said KSL, is it a used car or?
Uh, this one is, I believe, a, a twenty twenty-two and it's got low miles on it. Um, I, I don't know the full background behind it, it may have been like a dealer user vehicle, but. Um, it, it actually still has roll windows. I didn't even know they made those anymore. Walk up to a young person and go like this and they look at you like you're crazy, I have no idea what this means.
Hey.
Both the vehicle and the driver occupying the veh- vehicle, they're, they can operate normally or yes, a normal patrol vehicle.
Yeah, it'll have emergency equipment in it and, uh, so we'll have it. Assigned to the. Well, since we're gonna have more than one dare instructor, we'll probably have it assigned to the COP unit, so whoever's. Instructing there that day can take the vehicle, but we'll have it out at our community events and we'll be able to reintroduce the, um. The dare education program at our community events as well, so. It'll be eye-catching by the, we're done with it.
You'll notice it. Seeing no further questions, thank you so much. Alright, we'll now turn the time over to Ms. Day. For our pickleball. Lighting and our skateboard lighting. There's two different. Agreements. So we'll hit both of those.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Good to see you today, so, um, this is for, the first one is approval for an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County. For track grant funds that we applied for and were awarded, uh, for the lighting of the pickleball courts. And also the skate park out at Centennial Park, um, this is a matching grant. Uh, so the funds that we would see, receive from the grant are a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. This is something that has been requested quite honestly for years. We've had the pickleball courts almost four years now, if you can believe that. Uh, the twelve courts out there, excuse me. And the skate park, of course, for many years before that. So we've had a lot of requests over the years and tried to find funding and this is a way that we're able to get. This work done, uh, for the community and it helps at a lot of different levels, uh, safety with the lighting, obviously. But also from the environment, the heat that we get, the really hot summers that we've had. Uh, makes it a little congested during the times of day when it's not quite so hot. We also have a lot of public who've reached out saying that they work typical hours and especially as we run into the fall and it gets darker sooner. They're not able to use the courts like they would like to. So there's a variety of reasons, um, why this is really a, a good project for us. It is LED lighting and, um, they are on, they're web-based, so the nice thing about that is the staff can remote in. To turn them off or on, there's also a push button similar to what happens on the west side tennis courts. So, but those, the push button will only work and will only allow the lights to come on during our perimeters, right? So, uh, certain times, so they can't turn them on at midnight, you know, it's only during the same perimeters that we have for our ordinances. Uh, so those work, uh, that will work out really well, so that would be our recommendation is to approve, uh, the interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County for these funds.
Okay, any questions from the council? So, night sky. How do they work with?
Excellent question. Yes, excellent question, thank you. So, um, these lights, these LEDs. Are going to be provided, which is on the next one by Musco, who is the same company who's done other sport lighting for us. And they're a big name, they, they do a lot of work and, um, you can even compare their LEDs with other LEDs that are out there. And we're not gonna have the, the flow, um, of the light, uh, spreading out or any of that, so it's. These are actually a very good product that we'll be able to put on and we won't have any issues with that.
Okay. And what are our hours for the lights of the park?
So they can go until. Eleven o'clock is what our park open hours are, yeah, that's what our ordinance is right now.
And what time do they come on in the morning?
I want to say six, yeah, six AM if needed, yeah, so I guess there would be certain times of the year when that would be the case, yeah.
Yeah, if we don't have three feet of snow on them.
Yeah, right, that, that would be a challenge.
Did you want to add anything to the lighting company or are we good with just that?
I think you're, I think you're good with that. Again, it's a company we've used before and they are on the state contract, so.
Seeing no questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright. Mr. Johnson has two items as well. Um, an interlocal agreement and then a contract. We'll turn the time to him.
Thank you, um, these two items, this first item is, is a, an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County. Uh, the public works department applied for and received, it's recommend, was recommended, received and has, uh, been given three million dollars for a. A roadway project on thirty-nine hundred south between Redwood Road and the Jordan River. This is a, a boundary road that we share with Taylorsville City, half of it is ours, ours, half of it is theirs and. And so we, we work together with them to make this application and, and these are county transportation funds that, that are local funds that can be used. Without federal strings being attached to them, um, so. These are relatively easy to, easy to spend, but it's, but currently our, our estimate for this project is around eight million dollars. So we're not there yet, but this is a start, this is definitely. Kind of how we do these things sometimes where we, we get it a little bit at a time and we've actually just recently found out that we were, that we were recommended to receive. A little over one point one million dollars from the. Tap, the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is a federal program, which actually does federalize this, this money if we build the project together. But, um, we're, we're well on our way to getting something that is buildable and, um, we, we hope to one day come back before you with more money to, uh. Finish the project out, but for now. Um, this, this is a start and, um, we don't have a, a schedule yet of, of when we would. Start designer construction, but it, this, it's now officially, um, in the queue.
Okay, any questions from the council? Is there a timeframe on when this money has to be spent by?
Oh, I don't recall, it's generally within five years, but the, the federal money that we received is not available until. For three to five years and so. There's usually a lot of flexibility with, with this type of money and, um, everybody that, that receives this kind of funds. Um, usually has the same challenges of design and right of way and construction, which is. Generally no shorter than the three-year process. From conception to construction.
Okay, did you have a question?
Yeah. Kind of related, but not. Probably the biggest question I get recently is, when's forty-seventh gonna be done? When's thirty-first gonna be done? Can you send us kind of a? Instruction schedule, estimate?
Yeah.
So we can tell people.
Yeah, in general, forty-seven hundred south is gonna be all this year and the, the, the original construction before winter happened and was really hard and wet. Was to be completed this year, um, at this point, it's pushing beyond that potentially, I mean, we're. That's not official yet, but it would not shock me to see us have to push in the next spring, but. But for now, I mean, it's, it's a, gonna be a hard. Construction season the rest of the year and then. Potentially leading into next, depending on how it goes, but, and thirty-one hundred south. Uh, there's not a whole lot of work that we're, we're replacing storm drain and, and that's a quick process, relatively quick. We started it last summer and, and once the storm drains in and replaced. You've got a couple of weeks of paving, so we're, we're promising the parks department that we're out of the way before West Fest and the parade, so.
Well, they did that section east of forty-eighth really quickly, so they're a good company.
Once the, uh, once the pipe is in the ground, the paving is a very fast operation.
Okay. Sweet, thank you.
Yes, sorry. Taylorsville prioritizing this the same as we are, are they hustling for money too?
They are hustling, yeah, we work together with them on both of these applications, no, that's a great question. Um, uh, I think they recognize the value in this, there's also a lot of, of regional value in active transportation on that road. Um, so that we're gonna get some attention, uh, that way as well, and in fact, that's what that transportation alternative. Program funds are.
Got it.
And so, but yes, Taylorsville is, is also engaged. As much as us, I don't know, but. But that road definitely needs some help.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Should we move on to the striping?
Yep, this is a striping contract, um. We, we, uh, bid a, a contract recently, um, to have a contracted. Company that we would, um, have prices and guarantees from and insurance and everything else, uh, to, to. Just do the striping maintenance on our roads. Just do the striping maintenance on our roads. And um. We've. Been working with with a different company, but uh um and quite frankly, we estimated the cost would be quite a bit higher than what this company has given us. And so PEC striping. Is our recommendation that we award a contract to PEC striping. And uh. It, I mean, the the authorization amount that we're requesting from the council is roughly one point one million dollars over three years. Um, which is a generally a, it's not a a fixed number. In fact, the number that we had bid from from PEC was around a hundred and eighty thousand because we were assuming. That we would not be able to get as much um out of them. And so we're actually quite pleased because we're gonna be able to stripe the roads and keep that that pavement. The marking quite a bit brighter than it than we have been in the past. And so we're, we're actually. We're looking forward to awarding this contract and and having good fresh paving margins.
Okay. And it's a council for questions or discussion? None. Good job. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll go on to our consent agenda. Does anyone have any? Questions or issues on any of these items? There's four of them. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our communication. Item, uh, we're gonna have a presentation. Sorry. By Mr. Clay Partain and it's, he's with the Sports Salt Lake and Visit Salt Lake. So we'll turn the time to you and his supporting staff here is, oh, it's growing.
Yes, so I'm Tyson Libbert. I'm the Vice President of Sales for Visit Salt Lake.
Say your name again.
Tyson Libbert.
Thank you.
And Clay Partain's over there and he'll, he'll address this here in a second. Yeah, yeah, and melee, one of uh our, your hoteliers and our hoteliers is here. We appreciate that and Barbara's also with us, so. Um, Mayor and Council, thank you for letting us be here. Uh, we we have a unique opportunity to uh to boost our visitor economy. This is a pro-business initiative that passed through our legislature. I, two years ago, so in the, in the, not this legislative session, but the year before. And per the stipulations of that legislation, one of the steps that was required is for us to present to each municipality. And have you vote on a resolution and I believe we're on the agenda for May second with that resolution. So today we wanted to tell you about this opportunity. Not, not quite on May second, okay. Well, hopefully.
Future.
At some future point. That sounds great. Uh, so thi- this initiative basically. Allows for a two percent assessment to be added to a hotel guest's bill. The money is collected and spent at the discretion of hoteliers with the sole purpose of adding and increasing hotel occupancy and average daily rate. Of course, as that revenue increases, more taxes are spent and 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 kept here in your community. The projected increase for West Valley City is one point eight million and additional hotel room revenue. Along with those accompanying taxes. So uh, we hope you'll support when the resol- resolution comes. We wanted to have melee give a hotelier's perspective. If she would come up and then after melee, we'll have Clay speak.
Good evening, everyone. The visitor economy reduces the tax burden. Of their constituents by twelve hundred and thirty-eight dollars each year and boosting the visitor economy will increase the tax relief. One in twelve and a half workers are employed in the hospitality sector. I've worked in this industry for over thirty years. And my high school age children and my college age children and my husband are all in the industry. So this is a family business. Western State's Lodging and Management, they strongly believe in taking care of families, both local and visiting. And that will add to the success of West Valley City. We hope you will also see the value. Of the visitor economy and support the resolution. Thank you.
Clay Partain, uh, I'm with a division of Visit Salt Lake called Sports Salt Lake. And I'm tasked with leading a small team, there's five of us, uh, in pursuing and raising uh, raising the amount of. Bringing more uh sporting events to the uh Salt Lake County as a whole. So we spend our our days um developing good relationships with venues, good relationships with parks and rec departments. Um, economic development offices, um, local organizers, all of this in the pursuit of bringing more sporting events and creating more sporting events, which. Um, has a significant impact uh on the economy. Um, just really quickly, wanted to just highlight a few things here. First off, West Valley City has amazing venues. Um, we love working with your venues here. Um, I have a a good friend uh that I've developed and a good partner, Kevin Bruder, the GM at the Maverick Center. Uh, phenomenal and uh we work very closely with Kevin. Um. The the Maverick Center is a very unique venue. There, it's uh due to the, the, the foresight and the vision strategy and I gotta thank. Uh, Mr. Pyle, I think in large part, um, the Maverick Center now has, and it's only one of three in the entire country, a gymnastics podium. And what is a podium? It's not this thing. And and I know the council voted on that, so I think many of you are aware of what that is. Um, it's a pretty powerful thing when it comes to being able to market and track and and bring in more gymnastics events. So we've been spending a lot of time with Kevin on strategizing that and. Maverick Center is doing a good job. There's a lot of great gymnastics. I think we all saw the ESPN events um. Uh, media hit um that'll happen in January twenty twenty-four. We're really, really pumped about that. Um, but there's a lot more we could do in the gymnastics realm, so we are, we are strategizing to how we can best help Kevin uh. Achieve those, those uh, those big goals. We um, we also believe that the Maverick Center could be. Um, a unique venue and opportunity to host esports. Now, what is esports? Video games, right? Esports represents about one point four billion annually right now. It's a, it's actually a huge market. We haven't really done much of it in Salt Lake. But the Maverick Center could be an ideal hub for national and world level esports events. We believe in this enough that we're actually paying. For Casey, who's the Director of Marketing over at Maverick Center. We're actually gonna fly him to Toronto on our dime. Um, he's gonna attend a four-day conference with Evan Bowerly, who's on our team, sitting right over there. Wave your hand, Evan. Um, and they are going to, to be attending uh one of the largest esports trade shows in the world. Um, all, also that we can, we can learn more about this unique market, uh, strategize more about it, figure out how we might be able to leverage uh more esports to the Maverick Center. Um, it, just a couple of other things, golf, we know golf is, your golf courses are amazing. The Ridge and Stone Bridge, The Ridge is one of my personal favorite golf courses in all of the valley. Um, The Stone Bridge is a very unique course, that, that three nine holes. It's very marketable and uh we've actually picked up some momentum thanks to Evan's hard work. With the American Junior Golf Association, which Evan's been able to form a pretty good relationship with, they've actually presented us with a new opportunity. Um, just uh within the last month to host an LPGA uh Tour Legends Championship. And so they've, they've given us a RFP and said, we'd love for your community to review this. Um, the RFP has significant financial, financial uh challenges that we would have to overcome. Um, roughly about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for us to even. Consider the idea of being able to host one of these types of events. Well, we don't have any mechanism at the moment where we could. Get ahold of that kind of funding for an event of this type. And that's where we see um the CTA being able to, this is a special lever we could pull for situations like this where we could actually. Pursue some of these unique um high-profile events. Lastly, I did wanna get a highlight to Centennial Park, Nancy. Um, Centennial. Is the only eight-plex softball complex in all of the county. Um, why is that important? Well, softball nationally um is the highest-ranked sporting tournament in terms of quantity and in terms of size of teams that come to these events. There's hundreds of softball tournaments all over the country. Um, we would love to ramp up efforts to market the Centennial Park and we could use CTA funds um to go after some of those elite and um larger softball tournaments. Um, and then lastly, I did wanna, I did wanna just, I know some of you have even met Evan Bowerly. Evan is hired by us, full-time, paid by us. All he does is do sales, tourism. Uh, specifically, uh, mostly in the sports sector for the west region. So he works part-time out of Barbara Riddle's office. Um, part-time out of our office and all he does is live and think and breathe. How do we get more sporting events and tournaments? Yeah, into this area of the valley. So we're really happy about that. Um, but we do believe the CTA is that, is that next tool that we need in our, in in. Mainly Evan's tool belt that we're really gonna be able to, to really close and and escalate uh the sports market. I'm gonna call Barbara Riddle up really quickly um with Chamber West to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members and Mr. Pyle. It's so nice to be here today. It's always a pleasure. To be able to stand in front of you. You guys do such great work and the public service is just amazing, so. Um, and Councilman Wilhelm, we love having you on our board and appreciate your service there as well. So Chamber West has been working hard um to really bring attention to the west side. We all love it when we get our share um in the Salt Lake County Valley. Um, and so working with Visit Salt Lake, we were very successful in. In getting them to put a full-time person into the west side of the footprint. We don't have to pay for it. It's great. It's wonderful. We love it. Um, but Chamber West has been in support of this legislation since the beginning because we saw that there was some great. Opportunity um to really elevate and provide some additional funding that would support programs on the west side. Um, we're one of three regions um that are even being considered for this. There's a downtown region, a south valley region and a west region. And of course, the west is the best. Um, but it's a great opportunity to grow business and to support our businesses in the west valley uh industry, uh tourism and hospitality industry. And of course, anything that is good for tourism and hospitality is good for quality of life and real. So the board is in support um of this initiative and and sees it as a great tool in the toolbox that we want Evan and Visit Salt Lake to have. Uh, we really want to help grow that business in this, in this community uh and really encourage the city to consider. Um, signing a resolution and support so that we can move this forward and that we'll be in the game. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank, thank you.
And and could you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, any questions at this time? Yes.
I just had one on the second. Uh, part of our, of the presentation, prepared presentation. On page fourteen, we've got about seven hotels listed there with an address in West Valley City. In the given address in West Valley City, then when it says city-state, they say Salt Lake City.
Yeah.
West Valley or are they Salt Lake?
Yeah, so, so we identified fifteen hotels in West Valley City, but some of their mailing addresses do say Salt Lake, but it is West Valley City.
I'm, I'm reading that.
Yes, I, I, I know exactly which one you're talking about.
Valley City, Utah, eight four one one nine, Salt Lake City, Utah, eight four one one nine.
Yep.
I mean, I'm with Mr. Vsoc, are we in Salt Lake or are we in?
Yeah. Clearly West Valley City, yep, yep.
Question from Mr. Pyle.
Yes.
Um, the million-dollar loan that took the arena. Was that for any type of venue or was it specific? I don't remember.
Specifically to the Maverick Center.
But I mean, could it, could we use that loan to bring in sports events?
Uh, to the Maverick Center, yes.
Yeah. So. So maybe this is something that we wouldn't have to use that loan if we had these access to this potentially, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, not seeing any other questions?
Thank you.
Much representation. All right, well, now move on to our council calendar. Mine is not coming up. At all.
See the, thank, well. Yeah. I'll make that one there.
Oh, it's okay. Yep, I will take it. That's why, pushing the wrong part on the bottom. The May twelfth.
It's the. Always appreciate.
Oh, perfect. I'll make sure I get that added. That's a good job. Okay, anything else? Anybody see anything else or have questions? Okay. So on one of my things, we have at the Maverick Center, something Sting. And then at USANA Sting, so Real Sting is coming. In September and then somebody else is coming to the Maverick Center.
Double check.
Cover Sting.
It was a different name, yeah.
Yeah, I will double check on that.
Just I'm a Sting fan, so. Making sure they weren't gonna.
Real trick us. Six Sting.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to our potential future agenda items. Did anyone have anything they would like to talk about? Seeing none, council reports. Nothing. Um, I went down to the Utah League Conference last week. Very informative, really good ideas that I'll bring back a few later. But really good event and if anybody else would like the opportunity to go next year, I think you should. It was very, and I can only go to one breakout session at a time.
Three going at a time.
Three or four at a time, yeah, so extra support would be nice. But it was a last-minute decision, so. Is what it is, so be ready for that. And it's usually the same week every year, so. You can plan around that. All right, um, we don't really have anything for strategic plan discussion, so we'll move on to our review of our agendas for regular. Meaning of the RDA. Housing Authority and Building Authority. And I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle and Mr. Welch again.
Okay, great. Thank you, ma'am. So the RDA budget, there's really no significant change from last year to report unless Jim. Wanted to make any mention to that.
Good job.
Okay, so that. And you're okay, Mr. Nord as well, okay, after again. The Housing Authority does have some extra funding, which was uh. Associated with the, the extra federal granting, so that's why that would show up and look a little bit different from an increased budget standpoint. And then the Building Authority is, once again, just the pass-through for the debt service payments and facilities we have, so. Nothing really to report in terms of major change there. Unless there are questions.
Did anybody have questions on any of these agendas? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we do. Not have any other business except a closed session, so um. Our first one will be legislative update, no, legal update. Pending litigation update. We'll start with that one and then when we're finished with that one. Uh, we'll have a separate one for professional competency. And then no other business after that. So if someone could make a motion.
Don't move.
Okay. Second, oh, oh, roll call, please, Ms. Kamik.
Councilman Norville.
Yeah.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Petisamani.
Hi.
Councilman Whitestone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hugh.
Hi.
And Mayor Lake.
Yes.
Motion traffic to nervous.
Okay. Thank you, everybody that came and presented and really appreciate all your input and the time you've taken to come and see us, so thank you again. And we'll take five minutes or so, people rearrange.